Clarifications prior to starting the meeting, but I'll call this continued meeting from the county commission meeting regularly scheduled yesterday. That was continued to today to continue discussion about the statewide policy in North Carolina regarding COVID-19 and potential amendments to the county ordinance as well. So Ms. Pender, who is going to start us off with an update on the developments at the state level and what that might mean for Buncombe County for the staff?
Thank you, sir. We'll start off with Dr. Mullendorf, our public health interim director.
Ms. Avril?
Yes, sir.
Are we streaming?
Yes, sir.
We are? Okay, cool. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, good evening. So I'm just going to speak briefly, just to bring up the dashboard. So let's see, here we go. So this is the dashboard, similar to what you saw last, yesterday afternoon. The case count has increased slightly since yesterday, so we're at 84 cases. What we wanted to do is, so on the right-hand side, you see it's sort of the, where's the trend going? Is it green, yellow, red, that kind of thing? And so in terms of testing, we continue to see tests being done in the community through our self-checker. You know, we've had, I think, 52 people complete it yesterday, and I think it was about two dozen of them were referred for testing. We committed, completed follow-up of individuals who had completed the self-checker previously and to see, did you, were you able to get testing? And many of those, most of those individuals were able. And if not, we reached out to them to link them to testing. So things are going well with that. Contact tracing capacity, again, we're sufficient with our community services staff right now, being able to do all the contact tracing for the cases that are being reported. And then in terms of the favorable trends, it just means our case count is increasing, which is somewhat of a byproduct from increased testing. And so that's why that is a flat yellow trend. So yeah, we continue to encourage people, keep, you know, go to use the self-checker if you are concerned you have COVID-19. That will give you guidance on what to do and will help you get into testing. And then, again, if you do the self-checker, or if you don't do the self-checker, if you have symptoms, reach out to your healthcare provider and get tested. So I'm going to turn it over to Fletcher.
Good afternoon. So Dr. Mullendorf, can I set the stage about how we're looking in our roadmap to our new normal, that we're in a good setting, good footing to proceed into Phase One locally? As part of that process, over the last week, we had nine town halls hosted in conjunction with the Asheville Chair of Commerce and Explorer Asheville. We're invited over 600 local businesses to participate in giving us information, input in, as we, as we develop our roadmap to Phase One into a new normal. So a lot, a lot of input, good ideas from the community about reopening with the gaps they have, what kind of resources they need, what their plans are. It's a really good community engagement on that front. And that leads us to our intent. We know Governor Cooper signed his executive order number 138 into effect this week, taking us into Phase One on Friday. So our intent at the county level is to align with Governor Cooper's order, number 138, that which eases restrictions on travel, business operations, and mass gatherings. And then as part of that, we'll be adopting the governor's FAQ document in its entirety. So this will come together holistically. The, the one point, we're going to be aligning completely with the governor's order going forward, except for one point, where we continue to restrict leisure travel bookings from outside of western North Carolina through May 22nd and reassess there. May 22nd being the current expiration date for the governor's executive order. We'll allow those who have residence in the 828 area code can book leisure travel within Buncombe County. And lodgings are permitted to make future bookings, that, that's, you know, general bookings outside of the 828 area code for after May 22nd. But we want to make sure they understand that guidance from the state level or local level can change or be extended, so there is some inherent risk making those bookings, but they're free to do that. And then there's some places that the governor's order didn't address certain sectors, or there's some gaps in guidance, we're working through those. But for example, some of those areas where we're given that guidance is in campgrounds, adventure industry such as, you know, zip lines, adventure parks, outdoor activities, and then unique businesses, that we have some, you know, tourism-based businesses, escape rooms, pub cycle, things like that, we're looking at specific guidance for those. And we'll also be providing screen tools and public health guidance material to the community, which we'll get into in a moment. Part of that communication stra-
Hey Fletcher, question, I'm sorry. Can you back up one, please? On the, on the second one, I think I had a conversation with someone about, is there, is there a way to, I mean, to look at metrics of areas that are safer than Buncombe County when we evaluate what that sector is going to be able to do? For example, if someone's coming here from, you know, I talked to someone today, that the way it's written, someone couldn't come from Madison County and stay in Buncombe County.
So the, the way going forward, we'll address it, is so western North Carolina can come, it doesn't, doesn't necessarily matter if what their case count is in independent county?
So what, what areas is, is all of 828?
It goes as far east as Hickory, and then all the way to Cherokee and Clay.
Essentially, I think it's the 23 most western counties.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so that, that addresses that. I don't know where my brain was. But anyhow, you know, going forward, if, if there's a way to gather information on places that are, you know, much safer than here, you know, I'm not sure what the phases are going to look like, but it might be a thought that that would be part of, you know, our information that we would gather.
Yes, sir, I agree with that. We had a phone call today, we were discussing sharing some regional metrics together, much as we have our dashboard, so that the, the region can start looking at the problem holistically as opposed to county by county.
I mean, if somebody's coming here from South Dakota to book a room, we're probably okay, you know, but, I mean, I don't know if some places have had cases, and I'm not advocating for this, I haven't had any conversations, so as we move forward, it'd be good to get some, look at that information.
Right, and I understand the intent of that. And as we're, as we're looking at this, different places might have different case counts, but the burden of going through that for people as they come in, so we just said blanket right now, it's just western North Carolina, you're free to book, and then we'll-
I understand.
Is there, is there a subsequent slide that goes into some more detail on the tourism piece later?
Yes.
Let's keep going.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get to some, some ins and outs here in a minute. I just want to briefly talk though on the communication strategy. So we're pushing a stay safe, stay local campaign to inform everyone to go into Phase One. We'll be doing, announcing that and signing into the new order tomorrow, Thursday, at our media community updates. We'll be pushing that out through mass notification systems to the community that we're, when we're entering Phase One on Friday, and as well as the linked resources, developing digital toolkits, sign-ins and social media for the public, developing posters and providing an employer screening tool. One of the mandates from this new order is that retail businesses opening are required to screen employees on a daily basis, so we're providing a resource for that. And then to the right, you can see an example of some of the literature we'll be pushing out for our stay safe, stay local campaign, something that stores can put up in their storefronts. Couple of different reasons for this. One, to let the public know what their expectations are as, as they come in. Two, to let them know that they're in compliance with the current phase. And three, to reassure everyone that they're taking measures to safeguard their health as they come in. And then Max, you want to switch it over? So we have a better picture of this, so you can look at more detail, but what we've done is kind of a-
So I just sent this on to you as an email, so if you can't see it on the screen, you can fill out that email.
So here, we've kind of broken it up to see where we currently are with Buncombe County guidance and how that will look in Phase One we go into on Friday. You can just kind of see the overlay layout. At the top here, we have our mitigating measures, and then below that are activities. And we'll, we'll walk through this in a moment, but Max, you want to go to the next slide? We'll start there. So the mitigating measures are things that are going to be implemented all the time, and those aren't sector-specific, those are just general across the board. So physical distancing, for example, we currently have physical distancing guidance that's going to stay into effect during Phase One. And a lot of these are staying the same. One example of where they will change is that for our stay-home order, we currently have our Buncombe County stay-home order. As we adopt the governor's plan, that will be, you know, the governor's stay-home order. And that commercial activity, so prior to this, we had only essential travel. You could only travel for essential purposes. And the change for Phase One would be that now you can leave home for commerce, commercial activity and business. So more, more exceptions for reasons you can leave home. And as we start looking through the activities, we tried to break that out in the sectors just to give some general guidance of how they will look different between the different phases. Max, if you want to go ahead to the second slide, just, just the bottom of that chart. Okay, and now if you go back, we'll start working through them line by line. So retail, previously for the governor's orders was-
Fletcher, can I ask one question just before we start kind of going through this in detail? But again, on, on this list, the intention is for all the policies that you're going to be reviewing there, they're all, they're all basically what the states recommended, except as it relates to leisure tourism and associated lodging.
Correct. Leisure tourism bookings.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Another question. This, this hasn't been emailed to us, right? That sheet, that's a great, that's a great sheet, if I could get that. I mean, I did, did it get it earlier?
It was just emailed.
Just now?
It was just emailed, yeah. I haven't seen it.
No, I got it. Didn't show up on my phone, so.
Thanks, Max.
Thanks for making it bigger.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll walk through this. So, so retail was at 20% capacity for no non-essential retail. With the change in guidance, that will be 50% capacity or 12 people for 1,000 square feet with physical distancing and sanitation and hygiene practices in effect. Previously, childcare was open primarily just for essential workers, and with the change in guidance, the childcare would be opening for working parents. Teleworking remains the same, has been an encouraged activity for any business that can accommodate it. Bars and restaurants are still limited, limited to takeout and delivery service. Close-contact services, those are services where the service delivery itself necessitates being within six feet for 10 minutes or more, is going to be closed for Phase One. So that includes barbers and salons, theaters, music venues, bowling, gyms, and indoor sporting areas, and playgrounds. Visitation of long-term care facilities is not allowed through Phase One, so that remains Worship services, so we've, we've been allowing up until now outdoor services and parking lots, with the change in, we're reviewing that, but per the governor's guidance, no more than 10, you could do those online or outdoor with no limit, those not fall under mass gathering guidance. State parks and trails are at local discretion.
Fletcher, I have a question. The, the order says, if, if possible, so have we got clarification?
We, we are working currently on clarification of that from the governor, how to best interpret that.
Okay, I know, the way I read the order is like if, I mean, what, what is defined impossible? Taking chairs outside, taking sound equipment outside, if that's deemed impossible, and they decide to stay inside. So we are waiting on more interpretation from the governor, correct?
But the, so the, they issued a frequently asked questions document concurrently with the issuance of the order. And so that, that document states, what does the executive order mean for places of worship? It says, places of worship may hold services that exceed the mass gathering limit of 10 people if those services are held outdoors in an unenclosed space, and if attendees follow recommendations to promote social distancing and reduce transmission, so.
But, but do we go by the frequently asked questions as a guiding document, or the order that's signed by the governor is the guiding document?
So what's the, what's the recommendation from the staff on that?
We'd like to, we're asking for more guidance, but the signed document is the order, but we're adopting them holistically together. So the intent is to adopt them, much as we previously had, we had the order and our interpretive document, is to adopt them in the same essence as two documents serving the same purpose.
I mean, the FAQ seems to offer insight into the intent of the language in the executive order.
I, I would say by precedent, the same way we did locally, where we had the order we signed and an interpretive document to accompany that.
To further clarify.
Clarify.
So we did reach out to the, to the state, the governor's office attorneys, to get clarification. The recommendation coming from staff would be to follow the guidance in the interpretive document on frequently asked questions, which would state in Phase One, a worship service would be at 10 people indoors or outdoors at any amount on the outdoors. That will be our recommendation tomorrow, but by tomorrow, when we have our order in place, we will have that guidance from the governor's office to clarify.
So basically, we're asking for clarification for the governor on the order and the frequent, so we're asking?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, now, you know, because we had a conversation, that's why we, it took us so long to get started, was, you know, this question here, trying to get clarif, legal clarification, because you're right, Commissioner, the way it's written, it says that you're, you can be outside, and what was going on before, what was allowed before was you could be outside with drive-in services as long as people did not get out of their cars. And that's the way it was written, and that's the way it was observed. And this, when I first read it, I thought that it was going to open up that worship service would be allowed as long as they were practicing social distancing, and, you know, they were limiting, you know, the, the people and so on. And then a couple paragraphs down, it said, outside, unless being outside is impossible, so. So we do need to get interpretation on that lines. And I agree the FAQ does, does, is there to add, to add information and to help us, we just need to get.
Correct. And the governor's presentation as well, when he actually presented the order, clearly had that it was outdoors only. So we were taking guidance from the governor's conversation, not the written order, as well as the frequently asked questions. So tomorrow, we asked the question tonight, we intend to get that guidance tomorrow, and we will circulate that before our order is finalized.
I mean, the, the way I read it, it said that, the way I read it, is that the, the state was allowing services outside unlimited, as long as you could practice social distancing, is the way I read it. And I'll be looking forward to getting additional guidance on it, so.
I think, I think that'll make sense, and I think this is just one point where, when we come out, when we come out of this, we need to be just crystal clear, you know, that's, you know, if, there's a lot of places where we all have to kind of exercise some judgment calls, right? We kind of trust people to try to do the right thing. But this is just such a, such a central part of, you know, community and society, that if we're going to have a policy on it, we owe it to the public to make it clear what it is.
That's right.
Yes, I agree. Absolutely. Thank you, Fletcher.
Yeah, thank you. So to continue, this is, next couple rows is where we're getting to leisure tourism and tourism bookings. Previously was not allowed. Moving forward to Phase One, we allow that leisure tourism bookings for western North Carolina residents, again, that 828 area code. Hotels and motels, bed and breakfast, and short-term rentals and home stays, under current guidance, you know, they were limited to only book, making bookings for essential personnel. That changed, so we, again, the one point we differentiate from the governor is no leisure reservations outside of that 828 area code. Campgrounds previously were not allowed, and had some severe inscrip, restrictions for those who were already there. Campgrounds will now be allowed to operate in Phase One.
Fletcher, on that one, again, that'll also come with the understanding that that's from, from resident population of western North Carolina?
Yes.
Right, okay.
We were at outdoor sporting events and activities, were previously not allowed, now they can operate with a limit of 10 in groups. They can space out, you could have multiple groups of 10, but no, no close-contact sports, such as, you know, basketball, for example. Outdoor sports facilities, again, like those facilities such as tennis courts or basketball courts will be, will be open for no more than 10, except for the no-close contact sports. Libraries will open to 50% capacity. Community centers and outdoor recreation activities will be limited to no more, no more than 10 people. For office occupancy, again, teleworking is encouraged. Day camps are allowed, as long as they're in compliance with CDC guidelines. Overnight camps, per the governor's order, are closed. Funerals now allow up to 50 people. We did remove, we had a restriction for people coming in from out of state to quarantine in their residence for two weeks. We are removing that clause from the current order to be in alignment with the governor.
So if families come in to visit, then they don't, that's okay?
Right, it's, it's still a best practice and recommended, but we're not illicitly stating that.
Hey, we're not, we're not out soliciting for family to come to my house, I'm just letting you know.
Right.
Or if someone has a, a home in Asheville and a home somewhere else, and they come back here, they, they wouldn't be required to quarantine, but it still doesn't, but we still have the leisure tourism piece. So, so for lodgings, they still have to follow that. But for people who actually make this their home for part of the year, wouldn't apply to them the same way.
Correct. And it's still a recommendation and a best practice, but it's not going to be explicitly stated as a requirement.
Okay.
And then leisure travel, for future reservations for booking, that was previously not allowed under the current order, but now it is allowed starting May 22nd, they can make those bookings. But again, with the caveat that they have to understand that restrictions at the state or local level can be extended or changed.
Fletcher, I'm sorry, but short-term rentals are included with hotels and, right, as far as 828 staycation type things?
Yes.
Okay.
Fletcher, can we, can we just clarify on campgrounds? It just says campgrounds allowed, but that includes the 828 requirements on the others?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I just.
It's not written there, but.
This, this is going online?
No, not yet.
Okay. No, no, will it, will it go eventually?
Eventually, this is, this is still a work in draft.
Okay, can we, if, if it is, can we make sure we put that in there? So it's not a confused, it just, it just says campgrounds allowed, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's a good point.
Yep.
I think anywhere where it's relative to the 828, that's probably, and it's very helpful, very helpful.
So, and in terms of, so we're saying during Phase One, we're not doing leisure tourism, but in, enough, but starting on May 22nd, there will be some allowance for it. But, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's completely unrestricted, right? So is the staff thinking that there, as, as kind of like with restaurants and other sectors, that there might be sort of, sort of a partial reopening of the, of the leisure tourism sector? And so, because if so, we need to communicate that too, right? So that, you know, hotel operators and others can understand, you can start making some reservations, but there are going to likely be in the coming days, more detailed parameters for how that's going to work, so that, I mean, it's probably not likely someone's going to get 100% of their rooms booked up in the moment that we're living in right now, but just, just that there are some additional details that'll be coming out around that sector.
Right, we, we expect to be, you know, there's, there'll be limitations like capacity for hotels and other things like that. And a lot of that will be determined, we'll see as, as the governor goes. May 22nd is when his currently, or is set to expire. Again, he may extend that, modify it, we're going off of that.
Right, although, I mean, this is, this is the kind of one place where we are differentiating from the state policy, because under the state policy, you know, hotels are, are, well, the whole essential, non-essential thing is kind of going away, right? So it's just, you know, it's a business that's allowed to be open. And so people, in other parts of the state, people can take bookings from people from wherever, it's just, it's just simply not restricted in any way. So, but that, that basically means that if the county is doing something unique on this, it's really kind of, in some ways, up to us what we do, right? Because we're not, we're not on the exact same page with the state. So, I mean, I'm very supportive of us doing that, because I do think that with other parts of the country having a lot more, you know, a lot higher rates than we have here, I think it's a place where we need to go carefully. But I also do think that, to the extent we can, we need to give some, some predictability to the industry around when things will kind of start happening again, so they can make plans and they can start doing some things. But I, with that in mind, I think we, we want to flesh out some of those details, you know, in the fairly near future, so they'll have a sense of what the rules of the road are starting to look like. Is that, is that the way the staff are thinking about it?
We are, and we had some ideas around what that will look like, and we can share that now. And if you want us to incorporate that tomorrow, we can. We were thinking at 50% capacity, no adjacent rooms in the hotel, so you won't have a person standing right next to you in the next room. No breakfast bars, you can have pickup breakfasts and stuff. And 48 hours after that room has been vacated before you can re-rent it again. So there's a 48 hours, and we have talked to this with some of our hotel partners, and they would welcome that guidance as well. So if you guys are okay with that, we can add that to our order tomorrow, to let them, as we go into this leisure travel right now, when you're starting to book in, we would want you to think about that adjacent person standing next to that room, 48 hours before you flip that room. And, and I can't remember. And the breakfast piece as well, so.
That, that level of detail is helpful. Just to clarify, will those guidelines be in place for 828 travel? Or are you anticipating those guidelines, that, for the, the regional travel that can be booked as of Friday, would it include those kind of?
We can.
Guidelines?
We can, we have, they're expecting something-
Okay.
-around that, since they're going to be open for the first time.
Right.
So we were talking about western North Carolina rates, and it's only maximum 50%, no adjoining or adjacent rooms, and guest rooms are vacant for 48 hours.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't know if you meant that would be for the next phase of things or for this phase, but.
We are open to decide, if you want us to put it in now, that we've already fleshed that, that guidance out, or we can put it for Phase Two. But that guidance has been fleshed out with some of our partners.
So what would, if, if I owned, if I owned a hotel as far as preparation, separating the rooms, that's not a big deal. Cleaning is not a big deal, because that's what they do. Am I missing anything in there that would be difficult for them?
No, sir.
I don't think so.
No.
I think if we're expecting that kind of guidance in the future, you could give it to them now, probably happy to receive it. And then do you, do you see, the, to the chairman's question, on the next phase, what do you, what do you see happening? I mean, allowing outside 828 based on certain public health information, increasing the percentage from 50 to 70% occupancy, I mean, what, what, any thoughts on that now?
Yeah, I, I think that was kind of our logic, is that we, we use these next two weeks to evaluate, see how our trends are doing, see what, you know, neighbors are doing, and make a determination there. But yeah, relaxing that, possibly looking at 75%, relaxing some restrictions, getting us with Phase Two.
Are you mean, well, I thought you were saying with the Phase Two, it would be 50%? I'm sorry, you know, for Phase One, no leisure tourism, right? Phase Two, there would be some leisure tourism, basically what was just described, the 50% with no adjacent rooms and the 48-hour policy. That's what basically the vision is for Phase Two, and then over time, it gets, things going well, more and more would be, would be allowed.
Right, so we don't have it maybe necessarily synced up for Phase right now, but the intent would be starting at a 50% capacity, as the data shows, relaxing at the 75%, it's a full capacity with certain different parameters. We don't, we don't have the answers yet to specifically how that will look like, but that's the discussion we're having.
Well, let me, well, when you talk about with Phase One, we're not going to be requiring the extra room or whatever, are we? You know, when you say the room next to it, the 48 hours, and the reason I'm asking that, because if we're going to require this in Phase Two, I think we need to put it in in Phase One, because three of the hotel owners that I've talked to, who have called me, they're going to use this Phase One to test it, and get their workers prepared for Phase Two and going forward. So I think, you know, it would be good, you know, if we're going, that, the room next door, clean it within 48 hours, not use it, we need to go ahead and put that in place so they can prepare for it.
Yeah, I, I agree, because I don't think it's, I don't think it's restrictive, it's just, it's just guidance, and they're going to do that anyhow.
Yeah.
You know, there's nothing, you know, but it does help them prepare, and if they're hearing that, that we may go from 50 to whatever, you know, that's, that's good news for the industry and the other.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's talk about that for a second. So I, I think the, and I agree with the, the protocols, it'd be good to kind of test drive all that, get all that down. I mean, the, the reality is, if we're just, for, for Phase One, we're basically saying just folks from western North Carolina can book hotels, these numbers will be very, very these numbers will be very, very low, right? So, so I think we should use the protocols, but from a reality, it will not be in any way a challenge for the hotels to do it, because they're gonna have very low numbers of people staying in the hotels, if we're only inviting people from within Western North Carolina. So, so really, in a way, the most important question is like, well, what, what does, what are the, what are the things that we'll allow in phase two? When, you know, people from outside the state can, can begin visiting the area, presumptively the industry will begin marketing, you know, doing active marketing, things like that, where the numbers could be, you know, could be, could be significant. I personally, you know, when I just think about this, and it's, these are, these are kind of just some of these places where, you know, just, at some point, you just have to pick a number, right? There's no magic number, is it forty percent, is it fifty percent? But we know that, you know, when, during normal times, this is such a popular part of the country, that on any given day, a big percentage of the people who are out walk in the streets and, you know, and at that point, restaurants will be open presumptively, so, so this could be a big, you know, this could be a big, a big change. Which is good in some ways, but also the whole risk around, you know, transmission of this illness will be heightened. To me, I think the fifty percent number, if it was really attained by a lot of the hotels in the area, it actually seems like an almost worryingly large number, right? To go from kind of where we are to that. I think the realities of the market are that probably getting to that number is probably gonna be very hard for the industry in the early stages of this, just due to people's concerns about travel. I really like the idea of, you know, not having the adjoining rooms, and then, and then especially requiring the forty-eight hour wait period between people who stay there, because there's all this scientific evidence showing that, you know, this illness doesn't, if things are just left alone, it, you know, that dramatically reduces their risk. But that also by itself limits the capacity of how many people be staying in the hotels. The reality is, if you have that requirement, you know, you have to leave a room vacant for a couple of days after someone stays in it. The reality of the occupational ceiling is probably more in the thirties or forties. So to me, it feels like a, like a sound recommendation for how to begin resuming these operations. So, so I'd be comfortable with that for phase two, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to put a bigger number in there for phase two. If things are going well in phase two, then beyond that, sure, let's, let's grow it, but that seems like a good place to start.
Could I?
Go ahead.
Why the, why the forty-eight hours? Where did that, to wait to rent it for the next?
That was, I can't even say CDC, I haven't said anymore, because I don't know. But that was around, the virus dies after being exposed, so you leave it, so that that fear would go away from people. We clean it, but then we leave it alone, so that if there's anything we didn't touch or clean, that virus would die. But I don't know what timeline is.
I think it's also a combination of not just the CDC cleaning requirements, but giving people, settling people that know there's quelling some fears, letting them know it's not just cleaning, but there's time elapsed in between it, comforting the community.
But one, one thing we got to also realize is that there's not gonna be a hotel, or any of our businesses want to be on there that says, we're the one that caused. So I really believe that we can say, hey, look, you're, we have to really know, they're gonna probably clean these rooms. And they know, we know where they're gonna, because they're not gonna want to be the one that says, oh, guess what I've done. So, so yeah, we just, I just want to know where that, the forty-eight hour thing came in. Thank you.
And I, I mean, I think that there may be in phase two, an opportunity to even look at that. If it, if it, if it affects their booking, you know, and they, they could actually book more safely in twenty-four hours or whatever. So let me ask you a question. I also heard that the virus lives like a minute and a half outside, in the sun. Is that true?
So there's, there's many different studies, but there's evidence that, as with any virus like that, UV exposure can degrade them very fast.
Okay, so the reason I ask that is, at some point in time, we've got to make a decision, and I don't want to get in a debate on it, just for conversation. We've got to make a decision around playgrounds, and I'm hearing that playground equipment, that we don't want to open the playground equipment, which if, if I was to take my granddaughter to Lake Julian, which she loves, and I go there and she can't get on that new pirate set, I'm in big trouble, so I'm probably not going. So, but what I'm saying is that if it is true that it dies within a minute and a half, then the main thing we would need to be concerned about would be capacity and making sure everything, you know, everything, everything is clean. But if it dies within a minute and a half.
I don't know for sure, but that is, that is the governor's guidance as well?
Yeah, and it is quick degradation, but I know some of those studies are also coming from pristine labs. So if you consider, I think, a playground where you can't control the factors, how cloudy it is a day, if they're shaded by trees, is the underside of the monkey bars or the top side of the monkey bars?
Oh, yeah.
It's also, I think, clearly addressed in the governor's policy, so it's really, we're just, if we're aligning with the state, the governor's policy.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, and I'm not saying I advocate.
We're not limiting it, the governor's policy will address.
But I would like to know, I would like to, I would like to have good information, because one of the things that the public expects from me when I talk to them is to try to give them good information.
Some good information is that kids are germ magnets. They're pretty filthy.
You weren't, as nice as your hair is, there's no way you were a germ magnet.
The forty-eight hour.
They probably weren't, they probably weren't safe when we were out there.
Right.
Yeah, earlier.
The forty-eight hour on the hotels, does that include all the other, like bed and breakfasts and short-term rentals? So once they have finished a rental, then they clean it, and then they wait at forty-eight hours as well?
That's the intent.
That's the intent. And then campgrounds, bathhouses, are they to remain closed?
No, so we discussed this, campgrounds, they've been operating on their previous guidance with people who currently live there. And we've had calls with several of the campground owners. They've enacted really, really good protocols for keeping people on their individual campsites. Some of these people are dependent at certain times, some of them can be completely isolated on their vehicle. But some of the bathhouses, it's really no different than a Walmart bathroom. Staff cleans it, people will be going in. There's some incumbent responsibility on the individuals to, you know, for sanitation practices, but those will still be available on those sites.
And their cabins on, on the campground, they can rent them as well, their cabins.
Eight-two-eight.
In eight-two-eight.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, that should make sense, yeah, for eight-two-eight to be able to rent those.
I mean, technically, it's just a short-term rental sitting on a campground.
You're just, okay.
Right.
I just, I just.
Circling into hotels, within a hotel, a gym would be closed. And.
Congregate dining areas.
Dining area would be closed, and would there be any sort of guidelines around sort of cleaning of the elevators, the common restrooms, those, I mean, any, the front desk area where people check in, those spaces?
Yes, I am, there's, there's a lot of existing guidance for different industries. I've seen specific hotel industry guidance about cleaning, you know, how you clean a room, different than how you clean a lobby, as far as frequency, you know, how it's contact surfaces, having people, an assigned roving wiper, who just walks around and wipes.
Wipes everything, I need, we need to do that at our house. Just following up, one other question, since we're sort of on the topic of thinking about what phase two would look like. Can we just sort of play out the logic of, let's, at some point in the future, we're at phase two, meaning people from other parts of the country can come to Buncombe County, check into a hotel. They stay three nights for a bachelorette party, and then they go back to points all over the country. Let's say, we hope this doesn't happen, but let's say someone was in their first day of having the virus upon arrival. They're here, they're active, able to actively transmit. People then go back to all over, someone develops enough symptoms to be tested. So it could presumably be sort of a week, a week to two-week lag potentially, right? Or a week maybe lag from the time someone is here till we realize that they were, that they're positive.
Correct.
That's even if they ever develop symptoms.
Right.
And not even have.
So, I'm just trying to think out kind of the kind of things that we'd be, and then we'd just have this surveillance process in place, where hopefully someone would say, oh, yeah, I was in Asheville for three days, and that would kick into gear.
Right, that's where the contact tracing would come into play. I think that, that logic, that scenario is part of the reason we were so restrictive with leisure travel for the exact extent. People coming in from New York, Florida, Georgia, you know, and then, and then leaving, bringing the COVID nineteen here. So that's why we were proactive in having extra restrictions in Buncombe County to kind of curtail leisure tourism.
Well, I mean, but, you know, simply by the, you know, the fact that we have a, now we have a major airport in Buncombe County, which is good. Now we have, and have increased in the last few years, direct flights to many areas that were hotspots. So there's no question, shutting that down, you know, immediately upfront saved, saved a lot of lives, particularly, you know, because of the airport issue.
All right, Fletch, we're asking you a lot of questions, but you've got more to go through, right?
No, that was, that's the end of what we have.
All right, very good.
Can we ask questions?
Can we ask questions? I saw here where it said state parks. What about our county parks, our Charles Dionne Park, our Lake Julian? Are they gonna?
Yeah, so we've, we've opened a lot of those up, the greenways are open, we're encouraging them to open more up. Some of the specific county parks that have specific concerns because of equipment on them, or some of the city parks are, will remain closed. But the guidance is that, if the park's open, you can go use it. If it's closed for some specific safety reason, you just have to observe the closure guidance.
Well, let's, let's, if we may, Charles Dionne Park has a playground, so it can remain closed. The bathrooms could remain closed, but you're allowed to walk, you could walk around the lake, but right now, it's closed. And we need to.
So the reason some of the parks are still closed is we have the staff deployed on other functions. So as we start demobilizing the EOC and the functions that staff has deployed in, we will look to open the county operations again. So the ones that are open are the passive, the river parks that don't have people working. But as we start looking at cleaning bathrooms and the like, we'll have to bring our employees back. We are going through that exercise now to make sure we can start reopening county government within the next week or two, but we have to bring them off of the COVID functions first.
So we want to have, we want to have the staff there to say, like, Owen Park is open again, but since it is a facility that tends to be kind of for gatherings and stuff, that we make sure folks are following the rules and we're doing good management.
And I'll tell you, that, that is a, you know, if we can figure that out, it, it's a big deal. I, I am fortunate to, to have my grandchildren near me and be out on a lot of acreage, where they can just go and run and play and have my own playground, and, but not, an awful lot of people in Buncombe County can't do that, and they want to take their kids to those playgrounds. So if we can figure that out, and they may not be able to use part of it, but like, like you were saying, you could go fish there, or you could go walk there, they could go throw a ball there, and they don't have that liberty, because where they live is just too small. You know, and they, and we know it's healthier for them to be outside, so it's good to hear that that's, you think that's sooner or rather than later?
It is, we're working through that now, and I'm looking at staff, we don't have a deadline yet, but our goal will be to have employees back within the next week or so.
Wow, that's cool. So a couple of questions for clarification, I just want to make sure that in the guidance going forward, that we've had a lot of discussion about, about funerals. Just want to make sure that, that we're, we are now allowing weddings to occur as long as, under two circumstances. One, if they're inside, they have to be ten people or less. If they're outside, there is, as long as they're practicing, you know, social distancing, and, you know, keeping families together, and, you know, and if it's outside, there is no number associated with that, or are we at fif, or under our new guidance, are we at fifty?
Under the guidance, I would read it as a, as a worship service. Outside falls, does not fall under the mass gathering guidance, so they could have, there's no specified limit there.
As long as they're.
Outside.
Yeah, which.
Observing physical distancing.
Venues will be doing that.
Sanitation and hygiene practices.
But if they want to go inside, it'll have to be ten, right now.
So can I ask a question about that? Just, is this another area where there might need to be some, and I mean, I'm, I'm not against this in principle, so I'm just trying to ask this from like a legal standpoint, where it's, and I know we've only had one day to read this, and we've been processing a lot, but is the state policy crystal clear on that point? Because let's just say, some people would look at a wedding service as kind of a religious ceremony, other people might say, I don't ever go to church, I'm just getting married. You know, so is it clear, or is it a bit, is this a place where we might also want to ask, you know, what? I'm fine with aligning with what the state is, but I'm just kind of asking, is it perfectly clear what the state's policy is on that item? Like, if you don't consider it a worship service, then it sounds like maybe it would be limited, or would it, or I don't know, what's the current thinking?
It's a good question, I haven't seen weddings addressed specifically in any guidance from the state, only funerals.
Yeah, and so it makes me think, if funerals are limited to fifty, I don't know.
Okay, so. Okay, so I, I would not, okay, I would not, and I don't think wedding venues would, would have a problem if they were in phase one, limited at fifty. I don't, I don't, because I thought that we tied weddings and funerals together when we did our guidance. When we went, when we broke from the state and was separate, that's what I thought I remember.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Initially, in that first iteration, the state did not have guidance on weddings, so we coupled that with a local funeral number at ten.
So if, I mean, to make sure that they're allowed, I would not have a problem, you know, from a board member making a recommendation of fifty. I don't, I don't know what, where the board is on that, but that would be, I would be, I would think you could align that with, with, that weddings and funerals would be considered similar services. Both can be, both can be worship services and both can be.
I'm not against the idea, I just don't want to, what's, what the, what the state's made clear is, local governments can't do something more permissive than the state policy. I just want to make sure we're not crossing any, any lines there.
That's not.
You know, that we think, that we think that, we think that through carefully.
I don't think that would be more permissive than the state.
Yes, one thing on the wedding venue, you know, Western North Carolina is the, one of the hotspots for, does that put into the eight-two-eight area code of all that can come in for that gathering?
Asking the tough questions.
We need an answer.
Yeah.
Well, to tag along to that, I had the same question about funerals, for people coming in for those.
You know, I mean, we're all just kind of thinking this through, right?
So I, I think the, you know, the question is, do you consider a funeral or a wedding to be any kind of leisure travel?
Absolutely not.
Right, so I think that would answer that question.
It's not at all. And so what we're trying to do is eliminate people having to make a gut-wrenching decision when it comes to something personal like that, and I think weddings fall in the same category as funerals. And I would gladly, and I do not think it would be less than, I mean, I don't think we're being less stringent than the state if we say that we would allow outdoor weddings, a maximum of fifty in, in phase one, but I would like it addressed. I don't want to leave it there.
Yes, sir, we'll take that into consideration. I also want to point out, as we're kind of grinding sausage here and working through some difficult conversations, that, you know, we're acutely aware of the impacts and secondary impacts of all these decisions. So as we make all these decisions, these are the kind of processes we've been going through.
I guess, thing is, you know, you're having a wedding here, and just say the people are local here, so they're in the eight-two-eight area code, but their family is from out of state, but the eight-two-eight books the rooms for them. You know, I can understand if it's a one-day wedding, they can come in from South Carolina and have it, and no one can stay in the hotel or overnight stay without the area code. But, you know, I think that's one thing that just needs to be lined out there, that the weddings are, you know, essential or open for it, but, you know, out-of-state residents cannot stay or.
Yes, sir, that's a great point. We have, we have some really good communications channels through our local hotels, motels, homestays and B and B networks. So when we come up to a good solution for that, we'll make sure we communicate those expectations for weddings and funeral travel.
So I understand the difficult part, the travel part. I just want to make sure that, that in our discussion this evening, that we have clear guidance that outside weddings are allowed or not allowed with up to fifty people.
I think we just need more time to look at this, I mean, I'm just reading this right now. I think we just need more time to look at this, I mean, I'm just reading this right now, but, I mean, right now, um, community gatherings, um, mass gatherings are generally limited to ten, right? But then the order says that for some specific activities, you can go over ten, and, but it's not all activities, right? Let's just kind of, let's set, let's set weddings aside for just a minute, just outdoor gatherings in general, are those limited to, are those, those are generally limited to ten, so not just any, not just taking any activity outside doesn't automatically allow you to exceed the ten number. It's just the, some specific things like, like funerals and, and some other things that are in here, so, right? Am I thinking about that the right way, it's not an open-ended allowance for?
Correct.
So unless we can look at something in the North Carolina order that seems to give us a clear indication that weddings are, are allowed, then generally, things are not allowed when more than ten, so we have to kind of, I think we just have to look at this, because again, we are not empowered to approve or authorize activities, um, less restrictive than the state. So I just think we need to kind of look at this carefully and make sure we're following that protocol. And I'm not, and I'm not, I'll just say, I'm not against the recommendation in general, I'm just in favor of following the law.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we can give guidance to, I mean, there's people out there, and they could be listening right now, I don't know. But they're, um, you know, weddings is a big deal in, in, in Buncombe County, and it's a big deal emotionally. It's a big deal emotionally, and if, um, I just want to make sure that we can find out from the state, and, um, because like I said, I don't have a problem making, making that recommendation.
So I am, as we're doing this meeting, I'm taking notes, and I'm actively going to, after this meeting, I'll send them to the state for, and say, here's where we want some clarity.
Thank you so much.
But let's remember too, one thing about weddings in Buncombe County, we have two type weddings. One is the local weddings, and the other is people who come in from outside, have no connections with this area, but come here to get married.
Right.
So that's, you know, another situation, we got to remember that, yeah.
Destination wedding.
Yeah, that's a dest, will, have become a wedding destination, yeah.
Alright, commissioners, what other questions or any other questions?
Hey, I'd, I'd like, so, may I ask the attorney, may I have to help us here? It says under worship or to practice your First Amendment rights, First Amendment has the right to assemble. So could we say you have the right to assemble for a wedding and, and go ahead and put it at fifty and not be outside the governor's order?
I think the important part to start with in the, in the governor's order is that where it says that First Amendment rights and worship are not subject to mass gatherings, we go lower, it says that those type gatherings shall take place outdoors unless impossible. So that sort of gets us into what's impossible, and I would agree with the state guidance that that means if you, it's not possible, then you can't do it. It's also important to note that it specifically lists funerals as being able, permitted up to fifty people. I'm, I'm reading that, and I might be wrong, but I'm reading that to mean an indoor exception. So there is a clear difference, I think, between worship services being weddings and funerals in the state order.
I'm waiting.
Okay, then, so then really, we should interpret this as ten for weddings, whether it's outside?
But I agree with Fletch that it doesn't seem to give a, a upward limit on an outdoor wedding or any service.
I wouldn't interpret that at ten, I would interpret that as, uh, if you can have it outside, it, that they don't put a limit on it. And I don't know if they're dodging it, or it's on purpose, or they just don't want to, uh, if they don't, i- i- if it's not in the order, then it's understood that an outside wedding is okay, as long as proper social distancing is, is, um, is achieved. And it doesn't say you cannot have an out, outside wedding.
Well, but it says, it says.
It says mass gatherings are prohibited, and then it, it makes some exceptions to that. And so I think anything that's not listed in the second, in the second paragraph of section six A as an exception is thus prohibited, um, unless it includes ten or fewer people.
And the interpretive document says, does phase one change the gathering limit of ten people? Answer, most gatherings of more than ten people are still prohibited, so, but let's, let's look at it, you know, this is just released yesterday evening, and it's, there's a lot to it, so, um, again, I'm, I'm actually not against what you're, I just.
I don't think anyone's against weddings, and no one wants to limit people's ability to have funerals.
Right, weddings are, weddings are wonderful things, uh, but we just got to follow the law. Um, what else, what other questions folks have?
I just want to make sure we're being very clear on one point that we haven't addressed, or I'm sorry, just saying it out loud, I should say, is, and correct me if I'm getting any of the facts of this wrong, but under the most recent order, another area where we diverged from the governor, was the gov, the governor's order said, any businesses that practice social distancing techniques can be open now. And then there's also these essential businesses, and, and what we said locally was, we'd no to part one, only these essential businesses can open. As we move into this new phase, we are syncing with the governor to say, any business that practices social distancing, uh, including but beyond essential businesses can be open, with the exception of those that are listed in the order, like the gyms, so, does that?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're, because I feel like that's the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there, there are no.
That's the piece that I think it would be helpful to, because that's what I get the most questions about from folks. Is folks who would have been allowed to be open under the state.
Right.
But couldn't be open under Buncombe, and are now like, wait, but, but are not retail.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's the piece where I think the more we can really just clearly plainly communicate about that, which I'm sure you're planning to do tomorrow.
So with the governor's order, we're moving past the language of essential and non-essential.
Okay, good.
Thank you so much.
So, so basically, they're going to be able to open as long as they can protect their, their, their team members, as long as they can protect their customers, and as long as they can limit the, the number of people in their, in their business based on certain guidance.
Correct.
Except for this sub.
Except, except for, yeah, section five lists some specific industries, those close contact criteria industries, um, gyms, spas, barbers, examples that will still have to remain closed through phase one.
Alright.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, I've got a couple of emails here from the beauty salon and nail places, and.
They're still out.
They're still out until phase two. Or.
They're still out for phase one, I can't, I won't speak to phase two yet till we get details, but phase one, they're not allowed, per current guidance.
One more thing is maybe stating the obvious, but, um, obviously, the governor's decisions are based upon statewide trends. They're looking at these seven metrics, they're looking at statewide trends, our trends are really different than statewide trends in some regards, uh, or some of our trends are different than statewide trends. So as we sort of move through this period and into the next, it, it's safe to assume that our T, our public health team will be looking at those same categories of trends, but looking at local data.
That's, that's correct, we're monitoring the state trends, we're, we're taking that same, the same metrics they're looking at and pulling local data to, to sync up, and you can see some of those reflected on our data dashboard, and we're pulling more in, but we'll continue to monitor that.
Is it possible, I loved the first slide that, uh, y'all opened with, that had, um, in addition to the data dashboard, it had the, the like, testing, green, tracing, is, is that possible? If that's not on the website yet, is that possible to get on the website?
That's one I like.
Yeah, I like that too, yeah.
The da, the dashboard info on the website is, is really great, I've, I've found lots of really positive feedback on it. Alright, commissioners, any other?
Yeah, I hate, yeah, I hate to keep, but, uh, you know, wearing this out, but I really would like to know the issue on the, on the weddings. I don't know.
What's, what's, I mean, we know, we know, so we're going to answer that question.
So.
About, so, do you have anything else?
We'll, we'll get clarification, previously, we synced them locally with the funeral number, but we just want to make sure we, um, clarify that with state first.
Our gut feeling is that outside's probably okay, is that, is that kind of what I'm?
That's, that's not, that's not, I mean, just based on what I'm reading right now, it's, you know, it says, generally speaking, community gatherings of over ten are not allowed, that's a community gathering, it's not a retail store, you know, it's a, it's a community gathering. And, um, there's some, you know, some really specific language, um, around funerals and some other specific things. So unless we can find something to point to that makes it clear that the state is saying that that's okay, I want us to be sure we're not doing anything that's literally illegal. So if it's, if it's legally permissible, I don't have a concern about it, but I'm, I'm not seeing what to point to on that yet.
Well, I want to make sure we find out, um, you know, I think it's, uh, I've, I've had a, I've had a lot of conversation on that, as well as churches and, and, and funerals, and we, we've, you know, we've addressed that as best we can, but I've had a lot of conversation on that, and there's just, um, I think generally what, what people would, people would, you know, be fine to know that, hey, if somebody's going to come here, they're not going to be able to come here and stay in a hotel, they're going to have to come here and, you know, stay, I mean, the, the, keeping track of the people that are, that are coming, and even if it was just for eight-two-eight, here, we need to give some kind of guidance on out, outside weddings, uh, so.
I mean, just, just, I think the one point that is clear, if you, you could have a wedding if you had ten people or less, and it's, I mean, that's, that seems clearly allowed. The question is whether you can go above that number, I think, to me, that's what we need to investigate a little bit further.
Yeah, and, yeah, that, and that, the issue is, there's a huge difference between ten and fifty, based on the conversations that I've been having with people that are talking about weddings. I mean, you can usually pull, you can pull off bringing in, you know, enough family members to make it, you know, memorable with fifty, but.
You save a lot of money, you know?
Sure. Really? You tell that, you tell that to a bride, right?
I wish you would have been limited to ten.
Okay, we'll hear you, we'll look at it, we'll, we'll get a good answer.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
The guy I've seen that we had on weddings is what we put in, there's nothing in these state orders that addressed weddings at all, so we couldn't go back and look at another, just, okay, so we put that in to go along with the funerals.
Yes, sir, because we, we saw this exact same issue, we didn't have specific guidance on weddings, and that, that worked at that point because the limit was ten. So it, it was fine, but this is beyond that limit, so that's why we need the clarification.
So we are, we're going to reach out with clarification, yeah, okay, thank you, Dr. Melandora, I'll see you back there, thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Alright. Any other questions, commissioners? Alright, so, so, um, so all this good conversation and PowerPoints needs to be converted into an updated order to take what we have in effect today and to basically do all the things that we've, we've talked about, to basically align with the state policy but for leisure tourism and, and the lodging piece of that, so that's, that's the additional work that needs to now be done, is that right?
But it's being allowed in eight-two-eight, so that's going to be a big positive move, I mean, a lot of people will see that very well, I think.
I agree.
And that goes into effect Friday.
Let me ask, just, this is kind of maybe an annoying procedural question, but the governor's order, so it goes into effect on Friday.
Friday at five P M.
We've got, we've got that time to get, get it, okay, never mind, I withdraw.
So do we see doing our, ours, it's going to happen Monday, Monday?
I would, I would anticipate we would have it sync at five P M on Friday, which, so our intent is to, um, share this with the public in general in our media update tomorrow, but necessarily whether we sign it there or not, I'm not sure, but, um, we'll push this to the public tomorrow for planning purposes, and then, um, have that signed before Friday at five P M.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I know it's been a busy day, a lot to process, so thank you.
I want to, if I may, I want to thank, I want to thank the commissioners for allowing, for allowing this. This is, this was good to be able to work with staff, ask questions, now we can go out and let our, uh, people that we represent know some of the things, and Dr. Melandora, Fletch, all, you've, who've been working on this, thank you, all the other staff who's worked on this, thank you so much, and I just want to say thanks to this commission up here for, for allowing this to, to happen.
It's the way to do it.
Alright, thank you, thank you, agree with all that, and, uh, we are, uh, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.